Welcome, everybody, to the South St. Paul School Board meeting Monday, November 14th, 2022. I'd like to call the school board meeting to order. And Lisa, will you please call a roll?
Director Arndt?
Here.
Felton?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Raj?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Lala Bertie?
Here.
That's seven, oh, and Chirdias?
Here.
That's seven present at six o'clock.
Great, thank you. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda in minutes. And I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, November 14th, and our committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from our last meeting, October 24th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Great, second?
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
We'll call.
Aye. Oh, sorry. Thanks for the reminder, Wendy. Are you Monica? Because we do have somebody on virtual, almost on Skype, we do need to do a roll call. So Lisa, can you call a roll?
Director Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Arndt?
Yes.
Felton?
Yep.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Seven yeas?
Wonderful. All that motion carries. And tonight, our quality in action is the Student Services Director, Shawna Bach, along with High School Language Pathologist, Speech Language Pathologist, Shelley Mullen. Welcome.
Hi. So.
Chirdias, if I may, just for a moment, I do want to acknowledge Shawna is new in that role. So just, you know, to point out that she's stepped into our Director of Student Services program as she's come up. So we're throwing her right in.
Hey, all right. Thank you. Well, good evening, Chirdias, members of the school boards, Superintendent Zambrino, and our community of South St. Paul. Thank you for having us here this evening. I am Shawna Bach, the Director of Student Services for South St. Paul, and I am joined by my colleague, Shelley Mullen, who's one of our speech-language pathologists. So we are highlighting the work of our speech-language pathologists this evening. So we have six speech-language pathologists in South St. Paul, starting with our earliest learners, our birth to three, all the way up to grade 12, the students that Shelley works with. We serve just about 300, maybe just over 300 students in speech-language in the district. So I am going to pass it over to Shelley to talk about what she does on a daily basis. And then we have one student that we want to highlight.
Thank you, Ms. Bach. So my name is Shelley Mullen, and I am the speech-language pathologist at the secondary building. This is my 17th year at South St. Paul High School. So I have worked, when I first started, I worked at Capoja. I think I did a split, point two, point five, point five at the Capoja, point two at the high school, and gradually that developed into my niche. So I work with students that you would regularly think of when you think of speech services, articulation, voice, stuttering, language is usually the one where people aren't really familiar with. Vocabulary, knowledge, understanding, comprehension skills usually goes along with language, social and pragmatic skills, and then just overall communication skills. So speech-language pathologists can serve students with speech and language impairments, obviously those listed specifically in the previous slide. Students also with speech-specific learning disabilities, autism spectrum disorder, deaf and hard-of-hearing impairments, emotional behavioral disorders, developmental communication cognitive disabilities, excuse me, and other health disabilities such as a TBI, a traumatic brain injury, ADHD, or other health disabilities. So to receive speech and language services, students must meet the Minnesota criteria under the speech-language impairment to receive these services. However, some students can also receive these services as a related service under their primary disabilities such as autism spectrum disorder, developmental cognitive delay, or an other health disability. Services can be indirect or direct, indirect being usually consult with that classroom teacher or the resource teacher. Most, just a side note, most of the students that I see at the secondary building come to me with services on their IEP. So not a whole lot of brand-new evaluations, but we do have some move-ins or from other districts or state where we need to do a reevaluation, and they have to meet Minnesota criteria in order to receive those services. So then the fun part, getting to talk about one of my students. I have worked with Nate. He is a senior this year at South St. Paul, and I've worked with him since sixth grade. That is one of my favorite things about my job is that I get to see kids from six to 12. And so there's a huge amount of growth in that timeframe. And so Nate, a little bit about him, excuse me, he is a student with a deaf hard-of-hearing diagnosis, primary, and a speech-language impairment secondary. He has a moderate hearing loss in his left ear, uses personal amplification system, as most teenagers are with their self-help devices. He's not really consistent with using that. He has moderate language delays in vocabulary, knowledge, use, and comprehension. His reading and writing skills are below grade level. However, next slide. Nate has gradually progressed with his academic abilities and his independence since sixth grade, so a tremendous amount of growth with his ability to do school. He has always participated in mainstream classes, reading and math classes, with special education supports and services. So supports from the teacher from the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, our 917 intermediary district, and speech services. And he's had an academic support class to support his needs there, along with the accommodations and modifications to the curriculum as needed. So shortening things, modifying. We went from people writing for him as a scribe to him, you know, using speech-to-text technology to help him writing papers. So as an 11th grader last year, he participated in our tri-district CAPS transportation program. He was not super enthused about doing that, that is outside of his wheelhouse. When I brought it up, it was like, oh, okay, no, 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 no. But I assured him that he would get to work on some equipment, and that was his goal. He, if you think of Nate, you think outside's guys. He loves to hunt. He loves to go to the lake. He loves to drive four-wheeler. He's a hands-on kind of person. And so once he heard that he would have that opportunity, he was a little more on board. So he did apply for that program and participated and was able to participate in the internship program with North American Trailer in Inver Grove for his spring trimester, they're on semesters, last spring, and did a phenomenal job. In fact, they hired him on full-time for the summer because he was such a valued employee, which doesn't always happen. So that's a huge moment for him and for us. So part of an IEP at that point in a student's career, the high school career, we look at transition. And one of my jobs as his case manager is to kind of investigate those opportunities for him. What kind of careers are you thinking? What do you, what do you think you'd be good at? And so, of course, this hands-on mechanics type of job was his, was his best option. He was really interested in. And then he sort of fell into thinking about heavy equipment operator. So he'd heard of that through his dad, and so we did some investigating and found the website for that, the Local 49 website, and stumbled onto a pre-apprentice opportunity for high school students. So the Local 49 Union Operating Engineers, in partnership with Minnesota Virtual Academy, offers a pre-apprenticeship courses that prepare students for the actual apprenticeship training program to become a journeyman, an operating engineer in the construction industry. So we found this opportunity for him, and I think the next slide will just tell you one more minute kind of more about it.
Are you in high school? Are you interested in taking elective classes that will show you what the industry is really like? Minnesota Virtual Academy and Local 49 have partnered up to offer you courses toward becoming an operating engineer. High school students can enroll online, full or part-time, at MNVA to access operating engineer courses as part of their traditional school day. This is available to any student, grades nine through 12, enrolled in a Minnesota school district. The program includes four semester courses that give an overview of skills needed to successfully navigate the requirements of the Local 49 apprenticeship program. You will learn construction exploration, basic grade and construction math, construction equipment fundamentals, and basic maintenance of mobile equipment. You can take these classes anywhere, at any time, on your schedule, at your convenience. The courses offered count towards your high school elective classes with potential for college credits. If this is right for you, you will be better prepared and ready to enter the Local 49 apprenticeship program, knowing your options for your future and potential in this diverse If you decide not to become an operating engineer, that's okay, too. You took the time to explore, learn, and discover what's out there. Click the link below and get enrolled today.
So Nate applied last spring and was accepted. And we asked for permission from Mr. Ochaki, of course, to enroll in that program. He's currently taking construction exploration and the basic grade construction math online during an independent study. He has two independent study periods at the high school. So he's taking those along with the credits that he needs to graduate at South St. Paul High School. So he will graduate with four credits toward the apprenticeship program with the Local 49 when he's all done. He did have, I think there's a couple more slides. There was an operating engineers rodeo in October where they were able to go out to a site and try out all of the, some of the equipment that they could run. So that's him. I totally went and stalked him there and took some pictures. So he had a good time. I was, I think I was more excited than him, though. I think this is a really good option that we could offer some of our other students as well. And so I just attached a link if any of you want to look at that any further.
Very cool.
So that's just kind of one, one example of a student that I work with and not really the typical speech, you know, speech student that you would think of. So I kind of wanted to highlight him.
A great example.
Any questions about speech services or Nate's pathway?
Very cool success story. That was really, thank you so much for sharing.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I did get to meet Nate at the school last week, and Chuck and I said, hey, do you want to come and be in front of the board? He said, not so much. So I can.
I tried. I, he tried.
And that's not to call him out, because when I was his age, I would not want to say I'm in the school board either. But it was really neat to talk to him about the program. And, you know, he kind of lit up a little bit as he talked about, you know, getting hands-on and engaging with the, you know, I'm kind of jealous. I want to get into some of those machines.
I want to do the rodeo, yeah.
Seriously, fun. Right? So.
I think the stories we had last year from the transportation program were just the most incredible ones that I've heard. It was just such a great, a great experience for all that were involved.
Yeah, great. Thank you again. Next on our agenda is the public listening session, and there were no submissions this week. And so Director Raj, will you highlight our committee of the whole meeting?
Sure. Prior to every board meeting, we have our committee of the whole meeting, which is frequently where a lot of the actual business of being a board member gets done. We had discussions, probably predictably, around results of our most recent election and the impact that those results are going to have. So it was a lot of our discussion. Also, some discussions are our calendars and our committee updates.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Zambrino, some super great highlights for today, huh?
Yeah, always some good highlights, but definitely, as Vice Chair Raj just mentioned, a very exciting election that will be talking about, I think, for years to come, at least 10, I suppose, the results of that. And I want to commend Lisa on our technology here. We haven't done a hybrid meeting like this before, and it's moving really, really well. So I hope I didn't jinx it. But yes, I'd start with just a huge thank you to the community of South St. Paul. We know that it was a sensitive ask with everything going on around the economy and otherwise, and just so thankful for the community for stepping up and supporting both questions that were on the referendum. As a reminder, question one was really to help us stabilize and avoid a significant financial cliff that was coming when our ESER funds were to expire. So that really stabilized our district. And then the second question will allow us to invest in academic and mental health supports, additional programming. We're looking at arts, career and college exploration. So that's something we're going to have to build collaboratively. So just so people are aware, the taxes will start to be collected in January. This, these revenues or the funding that we have will be available to us next fall. So as we go into our budgeting, this spring, we'll be able to start to look at how do we want to use the funds moving forward. And so no answers here today, but we are going to honor those commitments and we'll work to engage our stakeholders to, to get more feedback. And then now I'm going to transition over to, it wasn't just me who wanted to say thank you. So we got a little short video that we are going to play here.
Thank you, South St. Paul.
Thanks for supporting our school.
Hi, this is Superintendent Zambrino. Want to give a big thank you to our community for your support of both questions on our operating referendum this fall. We all know in a small community that the school district is the bedrock of making our community the best it can be. Want to thank you for giving us the resources to continue a tradition of excellence and to bring great new things to our staff and students in the days and years ahead.
Coming out of the pandemic, our kids need a lot of support. Our staff needs a lot of support. And thanks to you, we can continue to serve our kids in this community with Packer pride.
Thanks for showing your Packer pride.
Thank you, South St. Paul, for helping us maintain small class sizes.
Thank you, South St. Paul.
Thank you.
With this levy, that means that we will not have to cut important programming, and we will also have the opportunity to expand our program, which will serve our students well, who deserve the best education possible.
Thanks for supporting us.
Thank you to all the volunteers who helped pass this operating levy. And thank you, families. Thank you, families, for believing in us and entrusting us to work with your students.
Thank you, South St. Paul.
Thank you, South St. Paul.
Thank you, South St. Paul residents, for supporting the levy. We look forward to continuing to have small class sizes and for expanding opportunities for all of our students.
Thank you for supporting our schools.
It puts a smile on your face when you can see the kids. And with that thank you, and that, that video was put together by Dinette Childs. And I was sharing prior to the meeting with the team here, the folks here, that this really was a grassroots effort. It was something not done on a, on a short timeline and on a shoestring budget, which is always as it should be for a school district. But our communications team and our finance team and others leaning in to just get the information and, of course, the board and our volunteers, everyone for helping out. So so appreciative of all that effort that went into that.
Did you jinx this?
No.
I love that video, because it's always good to remember why we voted the way we did.
Yeah.
It's for those kids, for those faces.
Always about the kids, right? It was such a big win for our kids. And the reason we hadn't put that out yet, we, as we'll get to the business here later, you'll all approve us to move the, you know, canvass the results so we can send them onto the county. So we'll send this out with the official confirmation after you all take action here in a few moments. But again, on the ballot was more than just the referendum. We had school board elections, and so we did have a high interest. It caught a lot of attention with 22 people wanting to jump in and support the school district. And our, our four candidates are Bernie Beerman, Anne Claflin, Tim Felton, and Wendy Woods Felton. But I want to give a sincere thank you to everyone who expressed interest. And we do have some board members going off. We'll celebrate our, the commitment you've all had and the work you've done. An amazing, amazing job. And it's been really fun for me to work with this board. So I'll always remember this board as it sits here tonight for giving me this great opportunity to come into South St. Paul. So more good times to come ahead. All right. And so I talked about our communications team. We rolled out recently an adoption of Parent Square. So what Parent Square is, is a new communication tool. It really is to serve as kind of a one-stop shop. So you can see all the apps we're using in one spot. And there's, it's hard to see on the smaller screen that we have here in the boardroom, but it shows up as a news feed, which I thought was really cool, because it, you see there, it says Capoja, or it's from the district. And I have kids in three different schools, and I get text messages. And two of them are CH in the name of the school. So I'm like, is that the high schools, is that the middle school? So as they come in, I'm kind of like, when, which, who's this coming from? So I love that Parent Square can give you that news feed. And again, it ties in with our other apps like Schoology and Parent Portal and others. And then it has a neat feature where you can set notification preferences on how you want to receive the notification. So just did a, launched this last couple of weeks, and we'll continue to push that out. I know I like it when I see it on my phone as they're coming up. It's, it's kind of a noticeable app, too, and not invasive, but noticeable. So nice job to the team on rolling that out. Some other highlights around the district. Last Friday was Veterans Day, and we do want to make sure that we pause to thank our veterans. And so we had a number of things going on here. We see a picture of our students at Lincoln Center, our ambassadors, making big, it's hard, again, to see it from the size that we have here, but their thank you posters that they put around the building, one to show their thanks, but also just to spur conversation, especially with the younger students who don't know, what is Veterans Day, and get that conversation starting. Our high schoolers in the French class, this is not just a day that's celebrated in the United States, so they tied it to what's, how they're celebrate the event in France. And so I'm not going to try to say the day. It's Armistice Day. I was looking at this going, I wish one of my two daughters who study French was here to pronounce that. But the flowers that are on there, the red ones are poppies, and the blue ones are cornflowers. And those are symbols of remembrance that they use in France for the sacrifices people made there. And then this is, some, these are some pictures from Capoja right at the entry, again, wanting anyone who served to walk in the front door and just feel that appreciation from our entire school community. Really fun event a couple of weeks ago in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Our cultural liaisons brought forward the idea of hosting a Dia de los Muertos celebration. So the picture there is of dancers, music and food, traditional food and dance. Always love seeing those beautiful dresses as they're dancing. But that's in the stock exchange. It was right in this central location for kids to see all the decorations and get really curious about it. And so they had ofrendas and other things that are designed, they're like offerings for family members who have passed. So to honor those. And I saw that there was, Dr. Schmidt shared with me, a longtime EL paraprofessional who worked with families and kids throughout many, many years. I did not know him. He passed before me.
Don Jesus?
Yeah. So there was an ofrenda in his honor there. So really neat event. We're hoping that we can make that an annual tradition. We do have about a third of our students who identify as Hispanic, and so it's important to acknowledge all of our cultures and traditions in our great district. Here's a picture of the Lincoln Sun students. So they were kind of around that time of Halloween, but instead of doing the Halloween and that kind of thing, but just working on social skills. So they practiced going around to the different offices and asking for a treat, please. And then the office staff got to pick fun things that were school-related, so pencils and erasers, things like that. So a chance for our Sun students to practice communication, social skills, and I think just a generally fun event for everybody. It's always nice to put a smile on, on everyone's face. And then in a similar kind of skill-building activity at Capoja, they have a snack cart, which I have been in the hallway when it's gone by and been known to say, what do you got on the cart, you know? So the kids go around the school and check in with adults and ask them if they'd like to get something off the snack cart. Lots of choices, lots of nutritious. But if you need to, you know, get, get by and get a little chocolate fix, they'll take care of you there, too. But again, a chance for students to have some fun interacting with adults, developing their social skills, but also thinking about their inventory, making sure they have what they need, counting the money, really building some work ethic. So it's fun to see them out and about, and I don't think it violates any child labor laws. Great honor for our tennis coaches. So Rebecca Sprague and Assistant Coach Pepper Meyer were both selected as the 3A double-A Coaches of the Year. So I wanted to make sure that we put that out in the space. We did share that, yeah. Always nice when great people get acknowledged for doing great work. So we know we have lots of great athletic programs. I did get to see some of the tennis activities this fall, and the kids were leaning in. So I can see why the, the coaches get some recognition, too. As always, we have the ability to follow us on all forms of social media, encourage people to get connected there. And we always kick out updates as, as fast as we can about great things going on, also important dates. So we have a couple of dates just to make sure people are aware of. We have three days off next week, so the, the fall break kind of coming up. And then no school on December 2nd for a Staff Development Day. So next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then as well on December 2nd. As always, all meeting materials for our school board are available on our website. So please always review things there. If you want to see what's coming up on meetings, you can also go back and watch videos of prior meetings to stay up to date.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to consent items. Consent items are items that come through each meeting that don't need much discussion, including bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? And Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Arndt?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Now, motion carries. Thank you. There were no policies up for review this meeting, so we can move on to our business items. And we are looking for approval. To approve the resolution, canvassing returns of votes of school district general election. Do I have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, great. Any discussion?
Chirdias, I'll just share, the next three items are the kind of legal, technical pieces that need to happen following the election. So we have, again, the referendum and a school board's on there. So once these are approved, we'll make sure that we follow up on the administrative side to get everything to Dakota County that they need to go ahead and certify the results.
Great, great reminder. Thank you. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Arndt?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
All right. And I'm looking to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, can you call that roll, please?
Director Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Arndt?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special election.
So moved.
Period.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Can you call that roll, please?
Director Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Arndt?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you. Next on board is to approve the revised 2022-23 district calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Any discussion?
Dr. Schmidt has come up.
Or some discussion?
Good evening, everyone. So this calendar change is to set January 2nd as a holiday. So a couple of, recently, we were made aware of a mistake on our So a couple of, recently we were made aware of a mistake on our calendar. We do what learning organizations do, which is lean in and say, okay, what's the guidance for it and what changes might need to happen? We convened some of our leaders in the district and came up with this recommended proposal, which is to make January 2nd a no school day. It's a district holiday. That bump then has a couple of cascading effects. What we're doing basically is at the end of the school year, changing the last day for students from Wednesday to Thursday. So we're extending the school year out by one day for students. Staff will have a, the teachers will have a professional day on Friday and then the following Monday becomes their comp day, which, so it just slides everything back one day. For all intents and purposes, students and staff are done either Thursday or Friday of the week that they were already planning to be done, so.
Great, thank you for that. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you. And that motion carries. And the last business item for tonight is I'm looking for a motion to approve the agreement with the South St. Paul Custodial Maintenance Local Number 70 for the contract period of July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2024. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great, any discussion? Oh, here's Joel Miltier, Director of HR.
I just wanted to present with you tonight our tentative agreement for the agreement with the custodial and maintenance local number 70. We do, did agree within the board's parameters that you set forth for a 2% increase in year one and year two, as well as a 2% increase in both years to their district contribution to health insurance. And we're looking tonight for the board to support that contract, ratify it, go forward.
Great, thanks for your work on that. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Great, and that motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Lot of business you just handled.
That was a lot of business. A lot of work that everybody else did. Thank you for that. We're on to our board member reports, committee updates, if you have any extra and where you've seen a passion. We can start down here with Wendy.
Okay. I did attend our, our high school musical play. I went to it yesterday, The Little Shop of Horrors. It was a phenomenal, phenomenal job. I so enjoy musicals and I want to put out a huge thank you to Mr. Holson for directing and the, and the choreographer and the singing director. It was absolutely wonderful. The kids did a great, great job. So thank you to all of them for participating in that. And also attended last week, the Education Foundation Gala, which was held at South U Country Club. Want to thank everyone who attended. There were over 200 people there and thank them so much for their contributions to the, to the foundation and the live auction and the silent auction. It's always such a fun, fun event. So thank you for everyone who donated things to, to that event. So it was, it was really nice. And on a very personal level, I want to put a huge thank you out to the community of South St. Paul for re-electing me for one more term on our Board of Education. This will be my sixth term on this board. So I thank you very much for your approval of me, of having, having me serve another term. Look forward to meeting with our, our new members that will be joining us also. So thank you to everyone who voted for me and all those that allowed me to put signs in their yard. It was, it was really great. So thank you very much. Look forward to serving our community, for our students and our staff. So thank you.
Director Walker?
Dr. Zambrino mentioned the Capoja snack cart. I just wanted to remind them that they did come to one of our meetings once. And if they really felt like it, they could come again. We appreciated having them that time and they're certainly welcome anytime they want to come. And then just a huge thank you to the community that we, you know, the video that we saw tonight and just the, the words that have come across. Just thank you so much for believing in our schools and supporting our schools and caring for that Packer pride. It's recognized that it was your support that got us here and we'll make sure to spend the, the proceeds wisely and do all of the things that, that were talked about. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And then I also enjoyed The Little Shop of Horrors over the weekend. Just, I've always said it's the best entertainment value in town and I'll continue to say that. It was well done and I congratulate the staff and, and not staff, but everybody involved with, with the production. It was really well done. So thank you for sharing your talents with us and I certainly enjoyed it.
True. I want to be the, the doo-wop urchins on the side. That's, that's what I want to be. John?
But maybe not where we would look for our dentist.
Right, no.
Yeah, True, A Little Shop of Horrors. Wonderful production. I too want to express my gratitude to our community for supporting the levy and supporting the kids of our community. Thank you.
Monica?
To say it again, thank you to everyone. I'm just so proud to be, you know, a part of this community and a part of this board. I would also like to give another shout out to the wonderful staff in our district that put so much effort into the referendum, specifically our communications people, our finance people, our district leadership. They just went above and beyond in every possible way imaginable. And I mean, the impact that their work will have over the next 10 years is just unimaginable. So just thank you definitely to all of their hard work. And I also went to Little Shop of Horrors. It was amazing. I was there on a Sunday afternoon and I had to wait in line for like 15 minutes to get tickets because it was almost sold out. And just the growth of the plant was probably the most impressive part throughout the whole play. You were like, that tech on that plant was, was pretty incredible to watch it. And so, yeah, so just excited to see what the new year brings.
Great. Director Aaron?
I was able to go watch the South St. Paul basketball team play in the Fall League last Sunday over at Woodbury. And they had graduated their top eight players from a very successful year last year and they were playing against a team who participated in the state tournament last year and had all their members back. And I want to urge everybody to get out and support these guys because they haven't rebuilt, they've reloaded. And they're, they're going to be very exciting to watch and Darren is doing a really great job with them. And then I have a shout out today to Avery Aaron, who happens to be my granddaughter on her third varsity letter as a freshman in high school. She was named to the all-conference honorable mention team and voted captain next year as a sophomore. And then I also want to give a shout out to my grandson Josh Aaron, who at the age of 18 was voted captain of his college wrestling team in Colorado. So we have some more Aaron leaders potentially coming for the third generation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I would like to thank, oh, Nikki, yeah. I'm looking right at her too.
I just, I want to say a thank you to everyone who made it possible for me to be at the board meeting tonight virtually. The work that went into making this happen. Lisa, I, you are an unsung hero and all the tech people that, that contributed to this to make it happen due to unforeseen circumstances. John's in the background trying to give you.
Well, he helped bring this, the papers back and forth so he can get in the shot from there too.
He was the courier. So.
I'm part of it.
Yeah. It wouldn't have happened without all of your care and concern and, and your incredible talent to make this happen. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Yay, it was good to have you here.
Yes, nice to see you.
Thanks. Thank you.[1656.44]